I want to apologize, it's very unusual for us to start late, but it's only five minutes, so anyway. I will call the December 2nd meeting of the City of Carrollton Mayor and Council to order. And we will stand and have our pledge, please.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America. A true republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman. Lady Bridges, would you do our invocation, please?
Sure.
Let us go to God in prayer. First, I would like to just say a special prayer for one hour only. Councilman Brett Better had a surgery, Lord, Father God, restore him back better than he was before, Father God. And all the ones that are sick in our community and need restored, Father God. As we lead this community and lead this meeting on tonight, Father God. Let us lead the way you would have us to lead, Father God, and do things in decent and in order. Lord, God is hard sometimes as leaders, that we had to make hard decisions, Father God. But with you, you make it all possible. And Lord, as we go through this night, as you grace us with your presence, these and all other blessings, in your dear son Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray, and that every heart say amen.
Amen. At this time, we do have one citizen comment. Mr. McKelvey?
I do not think he's here tonight.
Okay, all right. So we will continue on. You have copies of the minutes from October and November's meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections, additions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is Mayor and Council announcements and comments. And Councilman Bridges, we will let you start.
Oh, you're gonna start with me?
Yeah.
Good evening. Y'all still full off of turkey? Y'all quiet? Okay. Okay, the first thing that I wanted to say. I went by the ice skating rink today, it is so beautiful. Not that I can skate, but it looks beautiful. And thanks April and her team for such a beautiful job. And I had the opportunity to help with the West Georgia. They started back a long time ago when they was feeding families at Central High School. It's called the West Georgia Thanksgiving Meal. It was 2024. And it started with a crew of West Georgia ambulance delivering ready-to-eat Thanksgiving meals. Now, it's the entire West Georgia family. Varita, Flowers, Central High School, Carroll County Fire Rescue Team, the Carrollton City Council. We fed 1,700 people. And you would be surprised at how the look on their faces and how they look when they, we were knocking on the doors and they were like, huh? And we were like, we wanted to share some love and our community want to bring you a Thanksgiving meal. And it was a blessing for that. Also, the police department, they delivered food to the elderly in the community. And that was a great thing, too. And if they didn't get their box, they was calling like, where my food at? And we were like, we gonna get it to you, we gonna get it to you. And it's just been a great, great, great Thanksgiving to see all those people eating food and being happy. Ones that didn't even have food was thankful for that. We thought enough of them to take it to their homes. And I'm just glad to be a part of this great city and to be a leader in this community with this awesome team that I'm sending with. And welcome Ms. Melissa, she's our new attorney, Inma. And I just, we welcome you.
Good job. Happy Thanksgiving. It's great to see our junior council here tonight. And it's not too early to say Merry Christmas, so I'll just say that. Merry Christmas.
I just wanted to reach out to everybody. Sorry, I always forget that. So, reach out to everyone and thank the people that. Friday, well, of course, was Black Friday and then Saturday was Shop Small Saturday. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that chose to shop here in Carrollton. And I hope everyone will continue to do that. We have so many great establishments throughout the entire city and restaurants. So I encourage everyone to continue to support them going into the holidays. And then I had a great time at the Turkey Trot on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, which I encourage everyone to do next year. It's a great cause for causes, so saw lots of people there. It gets bigger every year, so Carrollton just continues to step up and help our own, so thank you.
Probably need the Turkey Trot after lunch. Before. Yes, it is great to see our youth leadership team here. We've got some new members we're going to induct in just a moment. But again, I want to say thank you to all the staff that has worked so hard and diligently to make our square so beautiful for. that has worked so hard and diligently to make our square so beautiful for the holidays, and all the events that are coming up, the parades coming up Saturday night, so mark your calendars, and I think with the weather, it's actually gonna feel like a Christmas parade. But anyway, and I want to say congratulations to our Trojan football team who keep climbing the ladder all the way to the state playoffs, and hopefully.
Come on, let's give them a hand.
They bring a lot to our community, and we're very proud of them. Again, I want to reiterate, please look on our website, and you'll see all the activities. Council Lady Bridges alluded to this ice skating rink, and it's real ice, it's not that bored stuff that you skate on in some places, it's real ice. So we're really excited about that, and we've had a lot of positive comments for that. So we will move on, and I'm going to ask our city manager to make his announcements and comments.
Well, just like to echo what you guys are saying, so excited about all the things that we have coming up in the city for the Christmas season. A lot of people worked really, really hard to try to provide our, our community the very best experience during the Christmas season that we possibly can, again, the parade on Saturday, all the decorations, the ice skating rink, pictures with Santa Claus, we'll be doing a Christmas market on the 14th out there at the Polar Pavilion, and I didn't come up with that name, I'm not that creative, but that's where the, that's where the ice skating rink is out at East Carroll. Very excited about that, and this Saturday will be an exciting time downtown with the parade and all that, all that going on, and they'll be showing the Georgia Bulldogs playing on the, at the amp for the SEC Championship Game, Go Dogs, and should be a great, great Saturday, so just excited to be a part of it.
Okay, now, I'll entertain a motion for approval of agenda items for consideration.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, hearing none. Our first item on our agenda is the.
He's on my.
Oh, oh, hey Brett.
Brett.
Are you there? Did we lose you?
Uh.
Our first item on our agenda is the.
He's on my.
Okay, Brett, we're ready. Okay, let us move on, and when he gets back, we'll, we'll let him speak. Okay, I have four new members to swear in on our Carrollton Youth Council Leadership Council, and that is Wilson Mills, Nand, hell.
It's just not.
Harrison Tysinger.
There it is.
And Camp Jennings. So if all four of you will come up here and we'll do it all at one time, okay? Miss Tara, you wanna come with him?
It's just not.
Harrison.
No, you're talking.
It's not turning out.
Or do you?
No.
You're talking.
No, you're talking.
No, you're talking.
I guess you'd raise your right hand for me?
Is it on? Yeah, okay. All right, what I'll do is I'll start and I'll say aye, and then you state your name, okay? And then I'll read the rest of it, and at the end, you will say aye will. Okay. I do hereby promise that I desire to be a member of the City of Carrollton Youth Council, that I will honestly and faithfully perform the duties assigned to me, that I will abide by the rules which govern the youth council members, and that I will be a good role model for all youth in the City of Carrollton community. Sworn and subscribed before me the second day of December 2024, Mayor Betty B. Kason. And I'll get y'all to sign it. Okay, you can put your hands down now. Okay, Camp, I think you're first. Okay, just sign for me right there. And I know we have lots of parents here, so if you're a parent of one of these four, would you please stand so we can recognize y'all, too? Yay, good deal. All right, and then Harrison? Got that attorney signature. Okay, is it Nand? Okay, all right, I didn't butcher your name. Sign for me right there. Wilson? Thank you. All right, and we'll get y'all a copy of this and give it to Ms. Tara, okay? You wanna do a photo, come stand with us, Ms. Tara.
The rest of the youth council, we all please stand and be recognized? There we go. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'm really excited about our youth council, I think this is probably one of the best things I've done since I came into office with the support of everybody on the council, and especially Mr. Brooks. It started right before COVID, and then it kind of died down because of COVID, and then Mr. Brooks came on board with us, and of course, he knew all of these kids and knew all the schools, system ins and outs of how to get them here, and so this is our third year? Third year.
As long as I.
Yeah, they came with Mr. Brooks, yeah, from the school. So anyway, congratulations to all of you, we had some that graduated and gone on to the University of Georgia and Georgia Tech, and help me out, where did the, somewhere else, I can't remember, but anyway, but I'm very proud of them. Okay, our first item, our second item on the agenda is a rezoning request.
Yes, the first rezoning request on your agenda is a rezoning request at Abbey Lane. At this time, staff would like to table this request, and is requesting that you recommended, or that you, that you table this request for one more month while we continue to work with the developer to make the product as, as good as it can be.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table the Abbey, 265 Abbey Lane and off Abbey Lane rezoning request. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the third item on our agenda is rezoning and special use permit request.
Yes, the third item is a request at 315 Bloodsoe Street, and the request is to rezon a tract, a .32 acre tract from R20, which is single-family residential, to R8 with a special use increase in density, and the request is to allow for a lot split, and the lot split would essentially create one additional building lot. And I apologize, that actually should read RM, that should not read R8, that should read RM. The special use density increase will include, basically, the lot, the lot itself will have, it has two houses on it, they will split the houses, they intend to sell these homes, and so it will give the opportunity for on occupancy. Planning Commission did review this request, the request did include conditions, the Planning Commission recommends the condition that the development is limited to one single-family lot per residence, and that no more than one additional lot may be created, and the request was approved seven to zero.
Okay, before we have Mr. and Ms. Burson speak, I need to read something to you. We will hear rezoning requests, since many of you may not have previously attended a public hearing on a, on a zoning request and want to quickly review our procedure. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each, each individual, is allowed a total of 10 minutes of public input. This means that all of those in speaking in favor of the request shall have a total of 10 minutes, and all of those speaking in opposition of the request have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected officials may ask, sorry, should not be counted against any time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present their application, others may then speak indicating first their support or opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by opponents to the application of the hearing. Okay, Mr. and Ms. Burson, do y'all want to say anything other than what's already been read? Okay, all right. Do we have the pictures showing what they wanted to do?
Haley, if you can do the slide 36. They've already renovated the, it's 315 and 317 Bloodsoe, they've already renovated the house on the bottom, and they intend to renovate the house on the top, too, and then split the lots and sell them.
Yeah, it's really a great improvement to the houses. Okay, do I have anyone here to speak in opposition of this? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the rezoning and special use permit request?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next rezoning request is off Stewart Street?
Yes, the next request is a rezoning of 23.41 acres, and the current zoning of this particular tract is ER1, and the petitioner is requesting an RM zoning designation to construct a single-family subdivision. The Planning Commission did review this at their November meeting, they did recommend approval of the request with a whole host of conditions. Since that time, I know the mayor and council had a work session, they've also been working with the developer. Those conditions have been tweaked slightly, the conditions that you have in front of you include the conditions of the Planning Commission, and then they also include a few other conditions, I think that we have, we have discussed with the developer, and I just wanted to quickly run through those with you. The first condition being that, basically, instead of an RM designation, that basically the property be rezoned to R10, which is single-family residential, but it would also include a 12,000 square foot lot minimum, which is close in nature to the Grove Park subdivision. The remaining conditions include that the development is limited to 35, single-family lots, and those lots shall be sold fee simple, and then they will be constructed with site-built detached homes. The second condition is that there is a mandatory homeowners association. The third condition is that the covenants will specify that no more than 20% of the homes can be leased at any time, and that they may be occupied only by a residential family unit of no more than two unrelated individuals. Number four requires the establishment of an architectural control committee that will review each of the site plans. Number five, that each house should be a minimum of 2,000 heated square feet with two-car garages, this is consistent with what is currently in Grove Park. The Grove Park houses range from approximately this size to up to 2,600 square feet and higher. Minimum lot width for each buildable lot shall be 75 feet, front and side yards shall be landscaped and sotted. Number eight is that vehicles shall be parked on paved areas designed for that purpose, in other words, you can't park in your front yard on the grass, and then no inoperable vehicles can be maintained on any lot. Right-of-way access number nine is limited to the general location shown on the concept plan, Haley, if you want to put the concept plan up. This concept plan has shifted from the initial request when the Planning Commission reviewed it. Initially, it was going to be on the north side of Stewart Street, but in order to accommodate a better site distance on Stewart Street, they are now showing the concept plan on the southern lot line of 750 Stewart Street, and that homeowner is willing to trade land with them to do that. The, number 10, the community amenities available to all residents shall be provided, including a spur to the Carrollton Green Belt along the sewer line, which is on the property just below, or just south of Flood Lane, as shown on the site plan. Number 11, if no land disturbance permit is issued or infrastructure completed and accepted by the city within 18 months of the rezoning approval, the property shall automatically revert back to its original zoning category, which is ER1. And then number 12 includes architectural conditions, each element has to have three architectural condition, I mean, three architectural elements, either modulation, bay, bow, or garden windows, decorative window lentils, and any other architectural element that the committee deems to be, to accomplish the intent. Exterior siding shall not be vinyl, it can be a mixture of masonry or hardy plank or wood. Porches, each dwelling unit has to have a six-foot porch, no less than 40 square feet. Windows have to be 20%, and roofs have to be architectural shingles, metal, fiberglass tile, wood shake, slate, and the roof pitch has to be 512 or greater, and then the gables facing the street have to be 712 or greater. And then the roofs shall utilize vertical or horizontal changes in the roof lines, varied roof forms and/or dormers. The garages shall not occupy more than 40% of the total building frontage, and then the minimum lot size I mentioned earlier, 12,000 square feet. And then number 11 is the public safety component that we've been putting in all of our subdivisions, which is the installation of flock cameras, I think you guys are all aware of what that is. This includes kind of the revised condition, so it's not the exact subset that the Planning Commission recommended, and like I said, the revised concept plan, it reflects what was submitted in the revised concept plan, which is also at your desk. And I believe the petitioner's here.
Okay, Mr. Preston, do you want to address the council?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, thank you guys so much for hearing my request tonight. I think Erica did a great job really describing what we're trying to do here. The biggest issue with this property is obviously it has a lot of topo challenges, and, you know, our intent obviously is to do everything we can to accommodate that, however, we really don't know what all needs to be done in terms of engineering until we know if we have zoning first. So that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to propose this great project. Originally, we were proposing 50, and we, you know, heard the feedback from P&amp;Z and staff, and we reduced that by 30% all the way down to 35, also with a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots, and also these lots, the lot widths are 75. The biggest issue with this property is obviously it has a lot of topo challenges. And, you know, our intent obviously is to do everything we can to accommodate that. However, we really don't know what all needs to be done in terms of engineering until we know if we have zoning first. So that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to propose this great project. Originally, we were proposing 50, and we, you know, heard the feedback from P&amp;Z and staff, and we reduced that by 30% all the way down to 35. Also with the minimum of 12,000 square foot lots. And also, these lots, the lot widths are 75-foot wide. And I know there's some 55-foot wide lots in Grove Park. You know, we still have a housing shortage here in Carrollton. And, you know, this is an incredible project. I hear you guys talking about the new Lake Shore development. This property is within walking distance to that. Also, this property is going to have a green belt spur that connects to Hobbs Farm right in the back of it. Also, this property is 2,000 square foot minimum. You know, this is, these are not multifamily starter homes, build-to-rent. These are really nice homes that are going to be a great addition to our community. Lastly, I will just say the proximity to downtown is what I love the most about it. And I was at San Beloco eating today at 12:30, and I was one of three people having lunch there. And it kind of made me sad a little bit because I was like, we need more people eating at our restaurants at lunch. And so I'm blessed to have an office here and get to support our local businesses every day. But this community, because of the proximity to downtown, really helps support and lift up our great businesses in downtown. So I'd really encourage you guys to consider this and vote yes for this. This is a great project for our community, and if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Brian, I was looking at the original pictures that you sent, and then the updated pictures that you sent today. And I know there's, you've said the 2,000 square foot minimum, but could you be a little more specific? Because there's a big difference in the first pictures we received and then what we received today.
Yeah, we received a lot of feedback on the images. And so these are actually houses that are in Grove Park. We actually love these. The house on the bottom is 2,400 square feet. It's currently, that house is currently on the market for $475, and it was built two years ago. Our homes, because of the lot, that's a 50, that's a 55-foot wide lot right there that you see. So our lots are actually going to be, you know, 20 feet wider. So we do have the room, we do have the room to do some bigger ranch-style houses. A lot of people don't like the upstairs. So what we were trying to project in some of those early images was some wider ranch-type houses. It'll still be 2,000 square feet, but now going to a 75-foot wide lot, we really have the room to do a one-story house, which a lot of people like, and a bonus room. A lot of them have bonus rooms on the upstairs, so.
Will any of these homes have basements?
Yes, some of them will.
Tell us about the access to Stewart Street.
Yeah, so we originally, the way the property, if, Haley, if you don't mind going back to that layout. Originally, we were showing the road to the north of the house. That parcel, that kind of hexagon parcel in the center. She actually is part-owner of this property, Mr. Smith is here today, but she actually owns that property. And so just talking to Mr. Ledbetter, really felt like we could potentially have some site-distance issues putting the road to the subdivision there. And so we worked with the owner of the home to see if we could work out some kind of, you know, property swap, if you will, and get the property to the south to put the road in. And I think, there's actually an old curb cut, and if you look at the old tax records, you can see, that's how they used to access the property, was right there on the south side of the house. So you can kind of see that down there. So it makes a ton more sense, and it's actually a lot easier for us because we're not having to deal with the power line easements, all that. Essentially, we're giving that to Ms. Smith, who currently lives in the house.
So looking at this picture on this big screen.
Yep, see the curb cut to the left right there on the bottom?
Oh, okay.
So if you go up just a little bit north, yeah, right there. So that's how originally they accessed the back of that property. So the road will kind of be, those trees will come down right there, obviously. And we're going to, in front of Grove Park, there's amazing, like, I don't know, I call them cypress trees, but privacy trees. So we're going to plant those along that road to give Ms. Smith a ton of privacy.
That curb cut, is that not the Baptist Association building?
That one to the left is, but if you look up just a little bit, you can kind of, right there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That one right there.
So how close is that going to be to the Baptist Association building, the entrance?
It's, so the property line is kind of where those trees are currently.
Yeah, okay.
From that, yeah, so.
Yeah. Well, unlike, I mean, yes, and I live on Stewart Street, and the traffic is a nightmare, and speeders, and, you know, but, I mean, that's much better than where it was originally because at the crest of that hill, you just cannot see. Any other questions?
I got a question. Since it's, since it's a slight hill, are you going to have some kind of, something there to kind of let them know to slow up or, you know, kind of just keep in mind, that's a busy highway?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, just to make sure people stay safe?
Yes, ma'am. I think we'll definitely work with the city to do whatever they tell us to do. I know, I think the speed limit is 30 right there currently?
35.
35. But they drive 50, yes, ma'am.
50, I drive 70. Okay, any other questions from?
What are you, what are you anticipating the starting or the price for these?
I think they're going to start around $450. I think that's going to be the start. With 2,000 square feet, I think they're going to start at $450 and go up, maybe even in the mid, mid to high fives.
All right, thank you, Brian. Is there anyone here to oppose this? Oh, oh, four, okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm Lynn Smith. I live in Winterville, Georgia, at 1180 Moores Grove Road. I was born and raised in Carrollton. I lived in this home that my sister-in-law lives in now. I went to College Street Elementary School. I graduated from Carrollton High School. I lived on this property and in that house until I graduated from college. And I've been back to Carrollton many times, and I have, I have enjoyed seeing the things around this property just make it such a desirable place to live. The Beltway in walking distance, the Recreation Department, the mural, the sports complex. And now you've really built a really nice playground, and the new dock over on the lake. All of that's in walking distance. So what my desire is, is the good and proper use of this property. We bought the property, my mom and dad bought the property in 1956. And over those years, there've been many offers, but there's never been a for-sale sign on it until now. So you might say, why now? It's basically, it's basically, number one, health, number two, age, and then the desire to allow other people to enjoy this property. It would be a wonderful place for people to live. Be a wonderful place to bring up a family. And as far as, as I might shed a little light on that, that drive you were talking about, the drive used to be a circular drive. And there were, there were people that were coming up that bottom drive, which is now being proposed for the development. They were coming up through there and accessing the property illegally, and it got to be a problem. So we, we just decided not to use that part anymore. But it is, it is still a driveway that is connected to the property, to Diane's, my sister-in-law's. So to have a place to live like this, that's the main thing that we, we would like to have, is a real good use of the property. And we, we need, we want, we want to have it done as soon as possible, basically, for the reasons that I've stated. And as we consider all of the things that could be done, we believe this is the best use of it. It would be good for the city, as Brian has said already, but it would, it would bring joy to people. Living there, I, I used to, I used to hunt rabbits and squirrels, and there's, there's a, there's going to be, I don't think it's been mentioned, there's a six-acre green space, or part of, part of this 23 acres is not developable because of the, I guess it's, it's water, it's the water table. What's it called, Brian? Floodplain. That connects to the extra part of the Beltway, which is wetlands where a lot of waterfowl and birds and animal life is. And so that, that's another plus for this property, that that adds to that. So I would just, I would like to see this be made available for people to enjoy, like I've enjoyed it all my life. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, both can come up. Well, one after the other, okay. Go ahead.
I'm Valerie Berry. I live at 814 Stewart Street. I have, I bought my house about three years ago. I absolutely love being a part of this community and that it's growing and progressing. And I, I'm not on board with this plan, just because one of the things that I fell in love with in my house is the trees, and it's just trees in my backyard. And I feel safe sending my 10-year-old in the backyard to play because there's nothing else back there. There's not other homes, other people, and things like that. And one of the main things is how busy Stewart Street is. It is constant flow of traffic and people speeding up and down the street all hours of the night, all the time. Now, I guess there were enough complaints because there was a speed limit sign that is, I can see from my dining room window that shows you how fast you're going, but that hasn't stopped anything. Hasn't stopped anybody. I don't let my, my son go out to check the mail because it is, it is, it, gosh, it about gives me a heart attack anytime. With that being said, I do appreciate the fact that it's dropped down from 50 homes to 35, but the average American home has, is like a two-car household. That's 70 extra cars that are going to be going up and down Stewart Street, along with everybody else that's going up and down Stewart Street. But that's really it. I just, I don't think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Berry. Okay.
Very pleased to be here this evening. My full legal name is the one-word Mel Kizadak, which is in Genesis, Chapter 14. My original name is Mark Teal, and my mother and father own a rental house that's located at 808 Stewart Street. And if the situ, as far as I know, Duffy Realty handles the rental of the property for my mother and father. Telling the full truth of the story, my mother and father also own a condominium on North White Street, which was occupied, we're very proud of Mayor Betty Cason. She occupied our condominium on North White Street for several years. We're generally wanting to point out the illogic in rezoning. Mr. Preston says that he wants to build single-family homes, but my understanding is that the request is now for RM10? Um, you know, at the Planning Commission, we were talking about zoning classification H, which is RM residential multifamily. Could you tell me what is the, what the current zoning request is for?
Yes, it was changed from residential multifamily to ER10, a state residential, 10,000 square feet, but he's going to even have 2,000 more square feet. So it's, it's single-family detached homes, and that's what it would be zoned.
Okay, so we're looking at category number E, R10? Single-family residential, 10,000 square feet? Okay, well, we're pleased with that. We're fine with that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Thomas Bass. I live at 212 Woody Glen Lane. Excuse me. So I own one of the houses that backs up to this development. And, you know, you hear about this, you're not too excited, but I don't own the property, so I can't really have too much of a say-so what goes on. One of the things I did mention in the Planning Commission meeting was a 20-foot buffer. I did not hear you mention that. So it's not in the proposed recommendations that kind of come along with this, this rezoning. I would suggest that that please be added as well. When Grove Park was first developed, along that border, there's a 20-foot undisturbed buffer. That kind of would allow for a little bit more of a wooded screening between Grove Park and this new development. That would alleviate a lot of my concerns, just being directly adjacent to it and having to abide by that 20-foot buffer. I think it would just alleviate a lot of our neighborhood concerns that we have and that I've heard from them. But I do want to commend the city on everything that they've done. Even Brian, you know, agreeing to the 12,000 square foot minimums, bumping it up to 2,000 square foot lots, excuse me, houses. That's been very, very kind. I know that doesn't come cheaply either. So I appreciate y'all's recommendations on everything, and that's all I had to say, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bass.
Does Curtis Creek go through this property?
If I could, we didn't mention it, but we, we are kind of showing that 20-
20-foot?
We're good with that 20-foot undisturbed buffer. You can kind of see it on the bottom.
Yeah.
You can kind of zoom in on that. So even, we're completely good with adding that. In fact, we were planning on doing that anyway. Kind of see what that, that line at the bottom is that 20-foot undisturbed buffer, so.
Okay, anyone else here to speak? All right.
Madam Mayor, before we move forward, if I could, I just want to point out if you should decide to approve it with these conditions that staff has put out. There's actually 14 conditions. There's a typo. It starts, it stops at 12 on the first page and goes to, actually 15, 15 conditions if you put the 20-foot buffer. See, it starts over at 10 and 11 on the second page. So I don't want any confusion of, or after the fact of somebody saying, well, there were only 12 conditions when there were actually 14 as written, and then 15 if you add the 20-foot buffer, undisturbed buffer.
So item 15 would be the 20-foot buffer, and that-
Yes, ma'am. Item 15 would be a 20-foot undisturbed buffer shall be maintained adjacent to residential land uses.
Okay. All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or further questions?
Just for the record, Councilmember Bridges, is that a motion to approve subject to all 15 conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. All right. No other discussion?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Uglum, do you, um, edit your second to be with those conditions as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the record? Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Motion carries? Congratulations. All right. At this time, we have just some housekeeping things. You have a schedule of the... Oh, I'm sorry. Jumped ahead of myself there. Uh, we have Resolution thirteen, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes. Uh, the next item on your agenda is a staff-initiated resolution, uh, UDO resolution relating to the design standards for townhomes and single-family detached properties. Uh, our hope is that your conditions on rezonings will be a lot shorter after these get adopted or should you choose to adopt these. Uh, we've discussed these at length, so I'm not going to go through, uh, all the changes individually. If you have any further questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
So, everybody has a copy of that? Sorry. What? How you just that long? I'm trying.
Seventy-three to seventy-nine.
Okay. Can I just put that in there? All right. Resolution thirteen, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton, state of Georgia, to amend section four-point-zero-two-point-zero-one, design standards for single-family dwelling and townhouses of unified development ordinance of the city of Carrollton. Whereas the city of Carrollton, Georgia is vested with substantial power to regulate the use of property for the purpose of maintaining health, moral, safety, security, peace and general welfare of the city. And whereas the zoning is a matter within the purview of the city pursuant to Article nine, section two, paragraph four of the Constitution of the state of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three. And whereas pursuant to the authority, to this authority, on September tenth, two thousand and seven, the mayor and council adopted a unified development ordinance hereinafter referred to as the UDO, which consolidated and amended certain chapters, articles, provisions and appendix in the Code of Ordinance of the city of Carrollton, Georgia, that govern the use and development of real property within the city. Whereas from time to time, city staff reviews the UDO and recommends revision to the UDO in the order to better administer the regulations contained in the UDO. And whereas the mayor and city council find it in the public interest to make the changes to the UDO recommended by city staff to aid in the administration of the UDO. Now, therefore, let it be resolved at the mayor and council of the seat of Carrollton to hereby amend section four-point-zero-two-point-zero-one, design standards for single-family dwellings and townhouses as follows. Four-point-zero-two-point-zero-one, design standards for single dwellings and townhouses. General, this section applies to all single-family structures and townhouses whether constructed on-site or with partially or with wholly, or wholly constructed off-site. Item two, structures subject to the standard shall meet the standards for the zoning district in which the structure is proposed for location. B, additional standards for townhouses to ensure appearance consistent with surrounding neighborhood and requirements as follows. Item one, front and side yards shall be sited. Item two, vehicles may be only parked on paved areas designed for that purpose. Item three, architectural standards for the structures. A, vertical or horizontal modulations using one of the following methods. Setback variations between dwelling units. No more than two units shall have the same setback. The minimum requirement setback is variation from one foot. Vertical modi- modi- modulations. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Trying to save my breath. Okay. All right. So, uh, and then there was strikes of the minimum width of the building, um, the minimum roof pitch, the minimum roof overhang. All homes shall be situated on a lot that the conventional front of the home faces the front yard. The minimum floor area, that stereo siding. And then item seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And then item C, um, number one, two, three. And these were, were replaced by the ones that I started reading, but, and so it would be adopted the second day of December twenty-twenty-four by the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton. Do I have a motion to approve these, this resolution thirteen dash twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Or any questions, discussions?
A, a question. So, if you could just highlight, uh, what would you say the big changes? Is there anything? Uh, it seems to me like most of this stuff is just pretty standard.
It, it is. Um, in our UDO currently, we really don't separate out, separate out single-family from townhomes in the design standards. So, a lot of this is very redundant because what we've done is we've separated them out. Uh, we've added, uh, currently our UDO requires two architectural elements. We've added a third architectural element. Uh, we've also given a little bit more flexibility on variances. That's a big one. Um, in other words, if there's a variation, uh, you know, these design standards fit the mold for ninety-nine percent of the homes we want to see, but occasionally there might be one that's, uh, mid-century modern or something like that. Um, and this allows for variances, uh, so that one, that one is big. Um, and, uh, we changed, we tweaked the roof pitches, uh, for both townhomes and for single-family. The, we require a higher standard on garages if people are going to use garages to count towards their doors and windows requirement. But that's, that's basically the gist of it. We took the two, separated them out. I was actually enjoying listening to Betty read it, uh, so, very, anyway. But did you have any specific questions about any of the specific?
No.
Okay. But that, the biggie is the variance. Uh, they, they have a pathway. If for some reason they're doing something unique that doesn't fit the mold, they have a pathway to approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ma'am, do we get a, did somebody second? I didn't hear it.
No, not yet. Okay. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay. Now, we're down to item six, which is the two thousand twenty-five mayor and council meeting schedule.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My portion will not take long at all. This is, this schedule is, um, basically the same as this current year. We, uh, generally follow on the first Monday of the month. We do have a few exceptions with the spring break of the school systems being the first Monday in April. We move that, uh, to April seventh. The week of the fourth, we generally don't meet that week due to people being on vacations and, um, and again, being the dead week for, uh, all activities with the school system. So, that one would be July the seventh. And then we don't meet on Labor Day, so, uh, we move that to September the eighth. Then the, uh, the work session dates are down there as well. They are, uh, basically in line with what we did this year in terms of, uh, it's generally the third Thursday of the month and, but there are a couple of exceptions due to shifting, um, council meetings. So, I would, uh, like, so you guys approved that this evening?
Okay. I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five mayor and council meeting schedule.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the board appointment, uh, for the Planning Commission. Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yes. John Jackson has resigned from the Planning Commission and at this time, we recommend Thomas Bass to fulfill the remainder of John's term. Uh, that remainder is one month. So, at this same meeting, we are also requesting that you reappoint him. Go ahead and reappoint him for a full three-year term in January. And so that the, it'd kind of be a two-part appointment for him. Um, we also have Planning Commissioners Jay Nix, Sandra Hausen, Hausen and Jonathan Hardesty, who have terms that are expiring at the end of this year. All three of these members have been invaluable. Uh, their attendance has been great and they have also expressed a desire to be reappointed. Uh, Jay has, um, been our Planning Commission Chairman for quite some time and he does an excellent job with that. If you do choose to reappoint them, their terms would run through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-seven. So, at this time, we were asked that you appoint Thomas Spass, um, to finish John's term, which is December, and then reappoint him beginning in January. And then also reappoint Jay Nix, Sandra Hausen and Jonathan Hardesty, um, at the, for the, uh, their terms to begin January first.
Okay. We have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve these fine people. Lucky to have them.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Motion carries.
We'll tell Thomas he did such a great job tonight, we put him on the commission.
Yeah, I want to express my appreciation too. This is a, sometimes a thank, thankless job and these are, these are real high-paid volunteers. All right. So, our next one is board appointment for downtown Carrollton Main Street Advisory Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two people rotating off, Stephanie Lister, uh, with the City Tavern and Erica Smith with Spa, Spa three-sixteens. They expired November the thirtieth. Uh, the downtown advisory board requests that during, uh, this meeting that we reappoint Erica Smith. She's eligible for another term and that, uh, um, she's indicated her willingness to continue to serve if it be the desire of the mayor and council. We've also, they have also requested that, uh, Tori Griffith with Local Ties Brewery be appointed, uh, to a new term to replace Stephanie Lister. She's expressed an interest and willingness to serve and they've really been a, a great addition to our downtown area. So, we would, uh, appreciate it if you guys would, uh, would approve these recommendations tonight.
Do I have a motion to, um, reappoint Erica Smith and to appoint Tori Griffith?
So moved.
Okay.
I second.
You're a second. All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Motion carries. The next one is board appointment for our redevelopment of authority.
Well, the, I think this is the last one, right? So, we have three members whose term expires December thirty-first. Kirby Butler, Eric Simmons and Becky Cranford. They've, all three, uh, have expressed the desire to continue. We are on, doing some really exciting things, especially in our downtown, uh, area and with some redevelopment. And they have been a great asset and, uh, they, they want to serve again and we would, we'd love to have them serve. Um, and then we have Dr. Manga, who, uh, is the interim president of University of West Georgia, would like to, uh, take Dr. Kelly's place, uh, during his tenure here at the university until he moves forward and, and it would be our intent to hopefully the new president would come in and sit on this, uh, board as well. So, we're asking tonight for you to reappoint Kirby Butler, Eric Simmons and Becky Cranford and appoint Dr. Manga to replace, uh, Dr. Brendan Kelly.
Okay. You've heard the recommendations. Is there a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second or any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. And seconded.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Meeting adjourned.